All right, for the next item, we have our regular Health Committee update. So Dr. Tigan is going to come forward and share our update at this time.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, and Dr. Cashwell. I appreciate the opportunity to once again provide an update on the work of the HCPS Health Committee. It's been a busy few weeks with the return of more students to in-person learning. The contact tracing team members have been extremely busy responding to increased reports of students testing positive for COVID-19. But before sharing today's agenda, I would like to thank our parents who have kept their students home after completing the daily self-check and having to answer yes to any question to include a possible exposure. The actions of these families has likely protected others from being exposed and potentially infected. These parents are to be commended. Now here's a look at today's agenda. The agenda today is based on the last two meetings of the Health Committee. The topics include reviewing current data and baseline data to interpret what it actually means for our schools, and sharing the updated guidance from both the CDC and the VDH, and updating the committee members on the status of contact tracing, and reviewing what happens when a student becomes, I'm sorry, about contact tracing and some of the information being shared on our dashboard. Discussion of the status of vaccines for both staff and students, and then finalizing the revisions of the HCPS COVID-19 health plan so it reflects our current practices. Let's dive into each of these focus areas, beginning with a look at the most current data and the baselines for the secondary criteria. On March 6, 2021, the total number of new cases per 100,000 persons within the last seven days was at 116.0. And the percentage of PCR tests that were positive during that same seven-day period were 5%. Two weeks later, on March 20, this is our most current data, the number of new cases per 100,000 has increased slightly to 116.3, while the percent positivity has decreased to 4.6%. Let's take a closer look at the indicators and thresholds for community transmission. The level of community transmission is determined using the two measures from the previous slide. Here's a quick visual of where Henrico County is based on these most recent seven-day data that was shown. The total number of new cases per 100,000 persons in the past seven days was greater than 100, so that indicates that our current community transmission is high. The percentage of PCR test was less than 5% over the last seven days, so that indicates low transmission. But since the recommendation of the CDC and the Virginia Department of Health is to use the highest of the two indicators to determine the community transmission, we say that our community transmission remains high. The CDC also provides secondary indicators to support the decision-making process in local communities. But these secondary indicators should not be used as the main criteria for determining the risk of disease transmission in school. These criteria include the transmission within schools, student absenteeism, and staff capacity. These are not new. What is new is the interpretation of that impact to a school. Transmission within schools, or at least on buses, has increased. We will discuss contact tracing and some of the challenges a little later in the presentation, but the number of outbreaks since February has increased to two that are confirmed and two that are pending. We do anticipate the two pending to be converted to outbreaks once they're reviewed by the Virginia Department of Health team. And so that makes our level of impact with the transmissions in schools as high. The attendance numbers for students learning in person last week was calculated to create a baseline to be used moving forward. The current overall rate of 92.2% for students in K-12 would indicate a level of low baseline or low. The average student attendance rate, just so that you know, broken down elementary, middle, and high, at the elementary level was 94.8%. The average attendance for our middle schoolers was 91.0%, and for our high school students was 87.3%. When looking at the staff capacity on average, well, that would make our overall baseline again, low. When looking at the staff capacity on average, there were two teachers absent from each school each day. This would indicate, again, what we would be considered as normal or low. So let's look at what the combination of the core and secondary indicators combined may suggest. Using the decision matrix shared for the first time two weeks ago, we know the community transmission is high. Using an average of the three secondary indicators, it is expected to see a medium impact on schools. Thus, the decision matrix for school reopening recommends that our elementary pre-K through five students should be in-person, have as much, the maximum amount of in-person instruction as possible. Secondary, consider temporary hybrid or reduced attendance, which I think of our Wellness Wednesdays, and social distancing, minimum of three to six feet with an attempt to adhere to the six-foot social distancing. Extracurricular activities and athletics to focus on more outdoors where more distancing is possible, and of course, recommendation of wearing masks, which we have not deviated And this is just the continuation, as you recall, if we had to go down into the next, to the high impact to schools. And so, at this time, I would like to turn it over to Ms. Gilbert, and she's going to give us an update on the guidance related to social distancing and into contact tracing.
On Friday, the VDOE communicated that the CDC guidance, which was disadopted by the VDH, now recommends the following with regard to social distancing or physical distancing. Between students and classrooms, the elementary schools' students should be at least three feet apart. In middle schools and high schools, students should be at least three feet apart in areas of low, moderate, or substantial community transmission. In areas of high community transmission, middle and high school students should be six feet apart if cohorting is not possible. Maintaining six feet of distance in the following settings between adults, teachers, and staff, and between adults and students at all times in the school building. Several studies have found that transmission between staff is more common than transmission between students and staff and among students in our schools. When masks cannot be worn, such as when eating, the six-foot distancing is required. During activities when increased isolation occurs, such as singing, shouting, band, or sports, and exercise, move these activities outdoors or to large, well-ventilated spaces as possible, in common areas such as school lobbies or auditoriums. Our Health Committee has discussed this new change that the CDC and VDOE has taken, I'm sorry, VDH has taken, and at this time, we are recommending that we continue with their six-foot social distancing as much as possible. We recognize that there will be times when we lower to the three-foot social distancing due to the numbers of students that we have and implementing air mitigating or prevention factors, but we are recommending that the six-foot continue due to exposures and contact tracing, continuing the six-foot 15-minute rule for an exposure case. Please see the revised VDH interim guidance for K-12 schools posted today on the VDH website. We have a website that we can get to you all. Skip over that, okay? Please note the changes, highlights to the guidance documentation. Some of these changes include the word mitigation has now been changed to prevention. These, again, are minor CDC language changes. CDC now generally recommends a three-foot of distance between students and six feet of distancing between our adults, as we've just discussed. CDC recommends that during high transmission, that the six-foot distancing for our middle and high school students be enforced, and sports guidance remains consistent with what we have previously had in our Virginia guidance. The remainder of changes are mostly visual and organizational. We have completely changed the decision matrix to be simpler in the presentation to minor CDC format. This should be to mirror CDC's format. We removed level of impact from the table itself and instead covered the concept in words and narrative. This helps make the table easier to read and easier to digest for our users. Testing language has minimal changes. As we build out more specific screening guidance, awaiting for CDC guidance around testing as well as grant guidance, we will add a testing guidance appendix. The close-contact definition, as I said, has remained unchanged and will continue to be that six-foot for 15 minutes for the purposes of case investigation and contact tracing. A reminder that layered prevention strategies is most important. We are balancing the important goal of getting your kids back into school face-to-face with the important goal of preventing disease transmission. To briefly review, contact tracing is done on anyone with a positive COVID test, anyone being tested, or anyone who has been exposed to a positive COVID case. A positive case requires a 10-day isolation period. Exposures are followed and require a possible 14-day quarantine period, which may be extended for household exposures. Air sick or illness process due to the high community transmission remains at a 10-day period unless a release from a physician is obtained. There has been a marked decrease in the number of adult cases that contact tracing is following. We believe this is due to our vaccination efforts and see this as positive and a hopeful step forward. The contact tracing team continues to work with their transportation partners, their athletic departments, and their schools to provide a safe, healthy, and learning environment. These partnerships have included the continued education on these prevention strategies, seating and attendance charts, and the involvement of our nurses on-site at our schools for quick responses and questions. New data on our dashboard, thanks to Mr. Jenks for our tracking COVID cases and outbreaks in our schools, was highlighted yesterday by Channel 12. They stated the following. "We found Henrico Schools has one of the most thorough and easily accessible reporting systems." Henrico School's daily online dashboard shows the specific school, number of positive cases, number of other people in contact, outbreaks between students and staff, and the date. It also breaks down athletics versus extracurricular activities. Henrico further sends out a message to the entire school community, families, and staff members if there's a positive case. The name of the student or staff member is never revealed in any school district. Again, thanks to Mr. Jenks and his team for their hard work in getting this dashboard set up for us. My team continues to work hard on making sure this data is not only timely but accurate. The communication team has this posted, and principals share relatively quickly with their communities, that timeframe being 24 hours. We continue to have key central office staff working directly with their emergency operations center and the Virginia Department of Health to schedule vaccinations. Kathy Edwards, our administrative assistant, and a huge shout-out to her, has been designated as the individual within HCPS to be able to assess the VDH registration system, and she schedules air appointments. Over the last two weeks, she has managed to schedule everyone who missed their second dose, and she was able to find them appointments within the maximum window of time. She continues to work each day to schedule any new hires wanting to be vaccinated. Again, a huge shout-out to Ms. Edwards for all the hard work she has done. The VDH indicated vaccination efforts would likely continue through mid to late June. They want to ensure everyone in the region who wants to be vaccinated is able to do so. The number of vaccines able to be given in a single day continues to increase. We have been successful in achieving over 5,000 doses per day at RIR and have hopes to meet a 10,000-dose day here soon in the upcoming weeks. In the Health Committee meeting this past Monday, there was also discussion around high school students having access to the vaccine. I have been in conversations with the VDH, specifically our epidemiologist. They have confirmed that the students 16 years and older with underlying health conditions may sign up for these vaccines, specifically Pfizer, through the VDH website. We are working with the VDH to have their terminology for this, to share with their families. These students would qualify as a Category 1B. Conditions would include such things as asthma, diabetes, and being overweight or obese. We certainly here in HCPS would not mandate that anyone, staff, or student get vaccinated. Our goal is simply to make sure anyone who is eligible knows that they are eligible and how to access that vaccination. The changes in the HCPS COVID-19 health plan that were recommended by the HCPS Health Committee have been made, and the revised plan will be posted on the website and re-submitted to the VDOE by Monday, March 29. The Health Committee continues to monitor for and discuss updates to practices suggested by both the CDC and VDH. As more and more data becomes available, the recommended actions are likely to continue to shift. Having key members of the VDH at our weekly Health Committee meeting helps us stay and adjust our course as we would continue to put staff and student safety as our top priority. Dr. Tigan and I are now happy to answer any questions that you may have.
And if I might just tag on to the end of that presentation and thank you both, before we take questions and turn it back over to the board, just wanted to reiterate that while, you know, you heard that the Health Committee's recommendation related to the new CDC guidance that went down to three feet was to remain at six, administration does concur with that recommendation that the Health Committee brought forward, and so while you'll see some changes that were just described to our health plan that will be reposted, that the changing from six to three is not a change we're looking to make now, and that's primarily their recommendation based around the fact that contact tracing guidelines have not changed. They remain six feet for 15 minutes, and so our goal is to remain in-person instruction and offering that to as many students as possible, as much as where possible. And so the thought was with levels of transmission as they are now and the contact tracing efforts underway, that a reduction to three feet could put us in a position to be contact tracing more students out of school than having students remain in school. So that's something we're going to continue to monitor on a weekly basis as they look at numbers, but administration does concur with the Health Committee's recommendation to maintain the six feet as possible between students.
I appreciate that clarification, Dr. Tigan, and thank you, Ms. Gilbert, for your presentation. Board members, are there any questions or comments at this time? Ms. Atkins?
Thank you so much, as always. I want to just acknowledge that we had the passing of Nurse Dimple Bassett and an extraordinary individual, wonderful nurse at Highland Springs High School, and just want to give my deepest sympathy to the family. She will be missed, and I know that you are working to shift and move nurses around and aides around, and I just think it's important to acknowledge the loss and honor her at the same time. And I'll say, "Once a Springer, always a Springer." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins, Reverend Cooper.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Shea and Ms. Atkins. For your comments, again, I reiterate each month the support and gratefulness for you, Dr. Tigan, and you, Ms. Gilbert, for your work and the staff as well. First question, for clarity purposes, could you discuss the role of the school-based COVID-19 liaison? And the reason I ask that question, if a parent or guardian has a specific COVID-related question pertaining to their student's school, is the school-based liaison their first point of contact, or is there a directory listing of the persons, and is it accessible to community?
The liaison, the COVID liaison, is really the person who interacts with central office on, has on a weekly or even at times more frequent basis to be kept up to date on any changes that happen. They're also taking care of inventory of the PPE in their building. That is a person that parents should be able to go to and ask questions, but I would also hope that a parent is comfortable being able to ask a principal as well, you know, and but if not, that liaison definitely has information from meeting each week with the central office team.
So would you say the first contact would be the principal instead of liaison or vice versa? And, you know, is it accessible to the parent at each school, the liaison's name and information of contact?
We can certainly ask our principals to share that liaison name with their community. Sometimes it depends, I think, the comfort level. I mean, if they were looking for a highly technical question, then they'll probably want to go to the liaison, but I know sometimes there's comfort level with who do you have a relationship with?
Right.
And if the person in the school cannot answer the question, they can certainly go to the liaison and be able to get back with the parent and answer them as well. So I think relationships are important, but they certainly may go to the liaison.
I appreciate it.
And we'll make sure that's communicated.
Yeah, I just want, you know, for clarity purposes, like I said, just, you know, the hierarchy, or rather, the best person to contact first. And the second question, as, you know, we look at the guidelines changing from the CDC, but we, you know, justifiably have, you know, decided not to acquiesce to those guidelines but kind of stay where we are because of contract tracing, I understand that. Question I raise is, what's some of the feedback that you're hearing from our teachers and building staff on the students and staff's compliance with the six-foot social distancing, and as well as feedback from the bus drivers? I'm just interested to hear.
You know, I think the biggest feedback we've gotten from adults, whether they're teachers in buildings or our bus drivers, are that the students are compliant. They've been really pleased with how, you know, they're sitting like on the buses, they sit in their assigned seats there, they continue to wear their masks, they're not having concerns there, which I think was what they had concerns about before, even though we knew from neighboring counties that had come back that that had not been an issue there and didn't anticipate it being an issue. You know, as far as inside the buildings, I mean, they have things labeled and seats set out that it's really hard not to have social distancing. You know, walking through the hallways, I think, is probably one of the greatest challenges when they're, you know, like going to a restroom or something and maintaining that six-foot distancing, but the floors are marked to help with that.
It's good to hear the feedback in regards to the compliance, I appreciate that. And then last question for me. At the Board of Supervisors meeting last week, there was mentioned that because the Richmond Raceway has not been designated by the state as a community vaccination center, this impacts its eligibility to receive more of the weekly doses of the vaccine from the state. And the question I raise is, what impact do you foresee this having on our efforts to ensure that all eligible HCPS staff who want to receive vaccine can actually get vaccinated?
I think that the impact should be minimal on Henrico County public schools because we, you know, our staff, our teachers were prioritized by the county in the very beginning when they were, when they could first offer to the 1B category, and, you know, as of tomorrow, I think every one of our staff that was previously immunized, that they had the first injection, will have had their second. Now, we're still having people, that new hires that come in, or people who opted not to have the vaccine are now deciding that they might want it, but it's not the masses. We have probably 75% of our staff of any, all categories that have been immunized, so that, we're well above the average on the number that have been immunized.
That's very encouraging.
I think we're in great shape.
Sure.
It will impact the community.
Well, thank you, Dr. Tigan. Ms. Gilbert, Ms. Shea?
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Ms. Ogborne, do you have any questions or comments? Trying to give a few minutes for the delay.
No, I don't, thanks.
Thanks. Ms. Cantella?
I continue to appreciate the work that both of you are doing and your teams are doing. Have, if you could just maybe explain how contact tracing works, especially if it's, it happens outside of school that differs from the guidance that we share with families?
Well, you want to go ahead? I mean...
So, contact tracing in the community is done primarily by Richmond-Henrico Health Department. We support them by contact tracing here for our schools, our school staff, and our students. So when an exposure or positive occurs in the community, we certainly rely on our families to be transparent, as we are with them. So if a family is transparent and lets us know that their child has had an exposure or a staff member does the same, then we put them into that contact tracing mode or pathway. And again, exposures are held to a 14-day quarantine that starts at the time of their last contact with that positive case. It can be affected by if it's a household person that they're in contact with, because that contact would continue to occur day to day, so that 14 days may be lengthened. Same with their positive cases. If a positive case is reported, either student or staff member, we put them into the pathway, and positive cases are isolated for 10 days. We are holding to the 14-day for quarantine on exposures. That is what our epidemiologist at Richmond-Henrico Health Department considers to be like the gold standard. It allows us to be consistent across the county with both staff and students. There are other guidelines that can be followed according to Richmond-Henrico or VDH and CDC. They require testing, monitoring of when that test occurs, what type of test it is, and as you know, we can't require staff or students to disclose that information. So in discussions with the Health Committee, with Richmond-Henrico Health District, and our epidemiologists, the recommendation would be that we continue to do the 14-day quarantine for anyone who is exposed to a positive case.
Thank you. Thank you so much for sharing that once again with whoever may be listening or watching.
Yes, ma'am.
Because we continue to receive feedback in numerous ways, this will be for Dr. Tigan or Dr. Cashwell, regarding Wellness Wednesdays, there are students who support keeping it for all the reasons that we've named at prior meetings. There's staff that have, we see the value for staff to have this time for planning as well as to work with students to enrich or remediate as necessary. Some advocacy came in requesting for consideration, would there be any expansion of pre-K to two on Wellness Wednesday from now till year end? And I just want to bring that forward and ask for consideration, or how the team feels about that.
And just to make sure I understand, the advocacy is to perhaps discontinue Wellness Wednesday for select groups of our youngest learners?
Yes, for those who it's most challenging, perhaps pre-K to two, or to have some kind of expansion on Wellness Wednesday.
Certainly, I think, you know, one of the challenges we still face is the number of virtual pre-K through to students is still greater than the number in person, and so, you know, trying to make sure, again, that we're serving those in-person and virtual learners well, that Wednesday is really an opportunity for students, teachers who can remediate more with the face-to-face students, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, to have some one-on-one remediation time via the Wellness Wednesday. But we continue to look at ways to maximize that time and make sure that we're meeting student needs, but certainly we'll take that into account as we continue to reflect on how we can best meet student needs.
Okay, thank you, that's all I had. Okay, thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you, Ms. Cantella. I have a few questions of my own. Dr. Tiggen, when you had the 92.2% baseline for attendance, is that just of in-person students or does that include virtual students?
Just in-person students.
Fantastic, thank you. And then, you know, we talked about, we have two outbreaks confirmed and two outbreaks pending. And you also mentioned in the sentence before that transmission is on buses. So are those outbreaks tied to bus transmission? Do we know?
Three of the cases are tied to buses. One of the cases is a classroom.
Thank you. All right. And then, I know this, y'all have already said this, and Ms. Gilbert articulated it so clearly, but I want to ask you to articulate it one more time because as soon as that CDC guidance came out on Friday, my inbox started filling up very quickly. And so can you articulate for us one more time why we are not choosing to change our distancing?
You know, a large part of that is what we're seeing on the buses with the three-foot social distancing that's creating more contacts and putting more students out, that, you know, if we reduce those spaces even more in classrooms, that then there'll be more, you know, the potential for higher numbers of contacts in the contact tracing, which means kids are out of school. And so we're trying to maximize the amount of time that our kids are in school. And, you know, so that's been a main priority. And we know too that our families, you know, chose to send their children back knowing what the distance would be. And so, you know, just the overall consensus of the committee was that stay at six feet. We're still at high transmission. Let's continue to monitor. And, you know, that's a conversation that will continue at the Health Committee meetings. But as of now, it was to stay at the six-foot social distancing.
Ms. Shea, if I may put some perspective on it. If we have a positive case right now and we're at six-foot social distancing or six-foot distancing in the schoolrooms or on the bus, we put one child out, that one positive case. Anytime we lower that distance to less than six foot, it becomes multiple children that are sitting within that, within that six-foot distance. And we have found that that is usually somewhere on the line of eight children. So instead of putting one child out of face-to-face for 10 days, we put one out for 10 days and another eight children out for 14. So if we can keep that six-foot distancing, we have more face-to-face instruction for our students.
I think that's important context you add. Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. And then, just to further clarify, a lot of the emails I've gotten about it are from secondary parents. And even, you are not recommending to adopt the CDC, but even if you were recommending, which you're not, but even if you were recommending, we're in high transmission. And so that would not impact secondary.
Correct.
It would still need to be six feet with the community transmission we have.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's an important detail that many of the news articles that give the updated bulletins don't get into that level of detail. So I appreciate that. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much to the entire Health Committee, our presenters, and the board for your excellent questions.